The 2020 Stafford County School Board, Ms. Holly Hazard, Hartwood District, Chairperson. Ms. Irene Hollerback, Aquia District.
February, March, and April? I'll move to approve.
Okay, um, I'm just gonna say the measure passes since it's just you and I and I don't know where Pam is yet. Um, so Chris, if you could go ahead and start with the fiscal 20 financial update?
Um, yeah, and I apologize because I should have mentioned this before you just approved the agenda, but I know maybe once we get to new business that we can try to move item number C up to the top and hopefully Patrick joins us. He cannot stay till the end of the meeting and he's got another responsibility. So he wanted to make sure he was here for item number C.
That's fine. We'll just switch it.
Okay.
To A.
Alright, so I don't have a document for old business number A, FY20 financial update. But I do have new information based on some updates from the state from the last time I provided the school board an update, which was at their last school board meeting. And I believe I'll provide an update tomorrow as well, but I wanted to use the FAB as an opportunity to to share some of the information mainly surrounding our lottery funding proceeds. If you recall at the last school board meeting when I gave that update, we were expecting to be about $1.3 million short in our lottery funding from the state. And since then, last week, we did get notification from the state that they do believe they're going to be able to meet the projections and therefore we would be able to recognize and receive that $1.3 million in FY20. So that is a huge, huge boost to us when we're still, when I provided the update a couple of weeks ago, still expecting to end the year with a positive fund balance. Uh, but probably about savings overall between 500 to about 1.5 million. And so that 1.3 gets us closer to about 1.5, 2 and 1/2 million, as high as that. Sales tax still isn't looking great. We're, um, the way sales tax works is it's a two-month lag from when the collections are, so we won't really have definitive numbers on sales tax until well into July and we'll probably have a better idea, but uh, for right now, we're still expecting a potential shortage in sales tax funding. And, um, but, uh, uh, as I mentioned, overall, we're looking a lot better on our revenues. Currently projecting in total for our revenues probably to be short of original budget of about um, 800,000 to 1 million dollars. However, on the expenditure side, projecting approximately $3 million in savings and the same disclaimer I will always provide to the FAB and to the full board is this still changes on a daily basis and we've got additional expenditures that we'll go over soon that are popping up and we're trying to, to buy as, you know, the items that we need that we can't wait to order because of, of shipping delays. Those we're gonna go ahead and move forward with. So, but overall, still thinking that we're probably gonna end the year with, with, uh, in the positive and hopefully around the $2 million mark in carrier funding.
So, yeah, a question. So the, um, so you said, uh, short about 800,000 to 1 million in sales tax funding perhaps, but you said savings of 3 million or savings? So, so-
So total, total revenue, um, we'll probably be short of our budget, um, 800 to 1 million dollars. But we'll have expenditure savings. So we'll be under budget on our expenditure side by approximately 3 million dollars.
But that's the 3 million that we put into the budget to begin with, correct? That's the-
No, so I'm still talking FY20.
Oh, FY20, I'm sorry, FY20.
Dr. Chase, did that answer your question or?
Yep, you got it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other, uh, questions on FY20 financial update? And then we'll move into new business and I saw Patrick joined us, so. He can sit here and available.
So I'm, I'm good on FY, um, 20. Does anybody else have any questions? Um, Patrick, why don't you go ahead and start with the update on the teachers. We'll move item C to, to the top with teacher contract contracts.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the flexibility in scheduling. I am solo with a four-year-old whose daycare closes at 5 o'clock. Um, excuse me. So, uh, I completed a most up-to-date hiring update for next year as of today. Um, I'm gonna try not to get overly academic with this because the way, the, what you call turnover can differ uh, depending on what your vantage point is. If you're from the vantage point of a family, you probably care about turnover of does a teacher change positions even within a school. If you're a principal, you care about whether they leave your school. From my vantage point, I look at did they stay within the division, uh, because that affects our overall human capital needs. And so that's the, uh, lens from which I'm looking at this. Given that we have had a total up-to-date of 422 vacancies that we needed to address. Now that includes vacancies created because of transfers because, you know, great, you take one position, but now we just, it's a change of what we need to fill. If you back out of transfers, the total number of positions, excuse me, uh, that we have needed to address has been about 317. That's on par with prior years. Um, because the deadline for staff and licensed positions to submit a resignation uh, was last Monday, um, we anticipate this number will not go up significantly from here. There are always some folks that are late resignations either because of unexpected relocations or, uh, or other things, but this, that June 15th date gives us a pretty solid uh, idea of where we're gonna land. Um, so, uh, like I said, 317, um, uh, as of today and don't expect that to go up significantly. With that-
Quick, quick question. So of the 317 vacancies that you had to address, those are all existing positions or are some of those, the, the new hires that we had in the budget?
That's inclusive of new hires as well. So that includes the, uh, the added positions as well.
Okay, so if we took those positions out, how many people did we actually have leave the division? Do you know that? Get it back to me later.
Uh, I can get back to you later on it with the exact number, um, but it's not sing-, uh, uh, I can get back to you later with the, uh, exact number. I can tell you that um, we've, uh, in our projections, we've already included all of these specifically designated added positions. So for example, the world language positions at the middle school level, the teacher tomorrow positions. Um, but the growth positions, we have not fully allocated yet because of course there we want to add those positions as enrollment requires them. So, speaking of that.
So, how many of those, how many of those positions are, um, academic teaching positions relative to, um, say last year? Are they about the same?
Can you say more about what you mean by academic teaching positions?
I meant, um, how many of those are teaching positions versus administrative positions?
These are all, yeah, these are all licensed positions, uh, not including administrators. So it does include positions like counselors uh, or speech pathologists, uh, but it does not include administrators, does not include, uh, paraprofessionals.
Okay. Is there any other questions for Patrick?
If it's helpful, I can say that we have already filled, uh, 224 of those 317 positions with external hires. So again, that's keeping, uh, transfers out of it. Um, and by external hires, I mean people who are new teacher hires to us, but that includes some people, for example, who are paraprofessionals who are gonna be teachers for us next year or substitutes are gonna be teachers for us next year. Um, and, uh, obviously we are still working hard on, uh, filling as many of those positions as possible. I'd say that, um, if I had to name one area that is a particular focus to me, it's math. Uh, we were looking great on math for a long time and then hiring slowed down and vacancies increased. So, uh, that's a place where we're gonna be putting a lot of emphasis on mining our candidate pool, uh, over the coming weeks.
No surprise from me.
No, it's no surprise. I, I, I admitted all along, I admitted all along to, uh, Joseph Hernandez in my office, overseas secondary hiring, uh, and all along I said, gosh, we're looking great on math right now. Just waiting for the other shoe to drop and the other shoe dropped, uh, which is not surprising. Um, it was just a matter of when. Um, but other than math, we're actually, we're at a position where most of the vacancies, uh, outside of elementary, elementary is a different pair because it's just the, the numbers are so much larger for general education elementary. Um, but we don't, we, we don't have more than, you know, a couple of vacancies in any particular licensure group. So that some total of vacancies is just a, you know, the, uh, the law of large numbers where it's just a lot of ones and twos added up.
Are there any schools that seem to be hit particularly hard with vacancies?
Good question. Uh, let me pull up, um, I can, I can advance for 30 seconds. I can, I can, I can answer pretty quickly, actually. I just had to open a different spreadsheet to be able to do it. Unfortunately, it's a large spreadsheet, so it takes a minute to load. The, the short answer is not really, um, you know, no, no elementary school has more than four vacancies, uh, for example. Uh, and, uh, I, you know, the figures might be a little larger at the high school level, but, uh, or the middle school level, but I would say no more, no school has more than four or five individual vacancies. Um, which is what we want to see at this point and what both of our, um, uh, what all my supervisors who work, uh, on hiring will do is that if there is a school where there is a particularly large number of vacancies at any given time, we will try to prioritize giving that principal the opportunity to review high-quality candidates to come through. So for example, if we conduct a virtual interview with a candidate, um, if we did or if anybody conducts the interview and recommends the person for a letter of intent, uh, we'll issue that letter of intent. We'll also give the principals that have the largest number of vacancies the heads up on those candidates so they can be the first people to take a look at them, uh, particularly if they're title schools because we want to make sure those schools are fully staffed.
Thank you. Thank you, Patrick. Um, is there any, are there any other questions? Okay. Um, then let's, I suggest maybe, um, move on. We're talking about, uh, the next item that we'll go to is the fiscal 22 budget, fiscal year 22. Um, it's hard to believe that we have to start talking about this considering that, um, 21 seems to be such a nightmare. Um, do you want to go ahead and get us started, Chris?
Yes, I wanted to go ahead and pull up, um, the first document I, I pulled up was just the counties, uh, just at their last meeting, I believe, adopted their budget development calendar for next year.
Chris, would it be possible for you to zoom in on these documents so that we could see them a little bit better? Great. Thank you so much.
Well, so this is our draft and it is still a draft. It would, um, come to the full board for information and then action in August. And this does include some of our CIP dates as well. So this lines up very closely to what we've had in the prior years, um, and more specifically, and, um, our FY21 budget development calendar. I think, um, a little bit that's changed maybe about a week or two is when the county administrator presented his budget. I believe it was actually in the very tail end of February last year and now it's, because it's not a reassessment year is my understanding, he can, um, county administrator can go a week later. Uh, that just gives us a little bit more flexibility, do you like, for, you know, superintendent and then the school board to, um, consider and approve their budget before the county administrator does. So that there is, the school board has a budget on file, um, with the board of supervisors when the county administrator makes that. And last year, I believe it was either very close to the same time or we may have even been right after the county administrator. I don't recall the exact time, but there is a couple of weeks now between those two dates, so that's a positive. Everything else lines up fairly well. I will, other thing I'll note is I think right now the date, um, that the county will, um, authorize the public hearing and not set the tax rates, but advertise the tax rates. I believe that is the week of spring break on our current calendar in March. So that, that could change, but, uh, I wanted to at least share that as of right now. I, I tried to get this to line up to where we could. The county is set to adopt their budget on April 20th. And similar to this past year, uh, most of the work was done ahead of time and we wanted a pretty quick turnaround so that we could adopt our budget and start with teacher contracts, getting those out very quickly. But I wanted to turn that around and have that adopted by the school board on April 27th. So I think a school board budget work session. So whether it's a work session or whether we just have a, an actual meeting and discuss it at the meeting. And maybe we determine that we need a budget work session. Um, some of this past year, I think we did one. We did it Wednesday or Thursday after the county, or, uh, the county adopted the budget. So that would be maybe the 20th. I didn't put that on here yet. I know that's pretty far ahead. We could try to start to plan that. I'll leave that up to the FAB if they recommend that we add that before we take it to the full board next month.
I think I'd rather personally, I, I think personally I'd rather wait to add a work session until we have more information.
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay, and, and that was, uh, the approach I was taking as well, but, uh, wanted to point that out that we did have one in between this year. Uh, I also wanted to draw your attention that we've got pretty big turnarounds already for our CIP. And that's why that's also on the discussion for tonight for the FAB is when the school board is, is set to adopt their CIP priority and have it turned into the, the board of supervisors um, pretty early in September. So we don't have a lot of time. Especially usually there's a, gonna be a lot of discussion and some back and forth there. So we wanted to get that on the FAB to start getting some ideas and feedback on on that, that approach before we take it to the, the full board as well. But that, that is coming, that item as far as discussing the CIP, large capital project priorities is one of the next few items on the FAB agenda for tonight.
And you'll have a new, you'll have a new board, a, a, a new FAB coming up at the, the next meeting. Um, and I would encourage the new FAB if, if it's possible to get that, um, well, I guess we don't have a choice about when they have their set the tax rate meeting. That's their decision, but having it during spring break makes it hard for people to come, um, speak to that. Alright, thanks.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. We'll talk all about it. I figured it out. Okay.
So if there, if, if you guys have any more questions on this, I can answer them or feel free to, to email me as well since I know, um, we're trying to turn this stuff around as quickly as possible with everything going on. So, right, I know I didn't get many of these items to you all in advance. So if you have any questions or once you look at it, let us, let me know and-
And, 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 and I have a quick question, Chris. When you say you're trying to get it turned around, what do you mean by that?
Uh, just, um, getting into the FAB and into the full board. So, you know, with everything going on this summer and the, um, you know, the, um, uh, challenges we have for next year, we're really busy on, on trying to get all this stuff filled together. So we, the county adopted their calendar last week, although they had some drafts out, you know, prior to that. So we started working on this calendar the last week and, and wanted to get it on the, the FAB agenda before we take it to the full board next month.
So I, I don't know what I missed, but wouldn't we be, uh, and this is for the next FAB because we, I'm no longer on there, but wouldn't you want to at least have the calendar synced that, um, we're meeting prior to their meeting so that, um, and then whatever it is that is causing you like, it sounds like there's a couple of things that you really want us to look at, but I, I don't know what it is. Like, you know, you have CIP, you have operating, so I'm not sure if you're trying to tell us something with this list or tell the FAB what it is that you mean or what you want to bring our attention to. I see priorities, but is there something that we need to know now?
No, I, I kind of went over the, the high-level dates-
Okay.
And, and pointed out one of the, uh, the one of the challenges with, uh, the school's spring break week. Other than that, it's, was really making the FAB aware that we were taking this to the full board and that we don't have much time before we're gonna be jumping in pretty quickly to the CIP discussion.
Okay. Do we have a final report from the CIP committee or have they even been meeting over the last several months?
So they'll pick up their discussions that the county did adopt a, um, their, as part of their budget, adopted the final CIP. And of course that's subject to change each year and that is attached to the agenda as well. I'll bring it up when we pull up. I think it's the next agenda item. Um, so I do, I do have what the final school projects were, the years that they were approved in the, in the county CIP. And let me, oh, I'm gonna pull up the agenda again real quick just to, oops. I wanna see if, so that's the next item on the agenda. If y'all are ready, I'm gonna pull that up and we'll jump onto that.
Sure, sure.
Um, so, and I'm not gonna leave this one up very long. I just want to draw your attention with this was uh, the full, all the large capital projects that were in the county's budget. And education is listed on here, but, um, my staff just kind of, just a quick summary of our large capital CIP items and where they were at in the county's approved CIP. High school is a September 2025, which is FY 2026 completion date. Um, elementary school 18 is in FY 2031 right now. We have the ECSE addition, FY 30 in the Drew Middle School in FY 31. There's no true date on high school number seven. And that wasn't really anything more than a holding pattern, holding place and a recognition by the county staff that based on our involvement trends is we'll be hitting the thresholds to be needing a high school number seven, um, outside of the tenure CIP. But because of the planning and the construction time that we would have to start planning and probably buying land or designing it in the very last year of the CIP. So there's, it was like a million dollars holding, I believe, in probably FY 30, 2031 of the CIP or 2030 maybe.
And so I know the, the elementary school you have it as 18 for 2030. I don't know where I'm gonna be, probably not on the board, but, um, do you, did you all determine where it was gonna be yet in terms of land? Because that, that conversation didn't finalize. We never had that final meeting, did we?
No, so, the showing now is what was the schools', uh, school board's request for the CIP. And obviously we recognize that elementary school 18 was needed prior to 2031 or 2030. Uh, but unfortunately because of the funding restrictions and debt capacity limitations on the county side, they weren't able to get it any earlier in the CIP. So they put it as early as they could in the CIP, which is why it's so late in the CIP. But the actual need was, you know, beginning earlier than that. Uh, but at this point, we had not started looking for land or identifying that land or efforts and then concentrating on the high school land side right now.
Any, anybody else have any questions on this? Sarah? Liza?
Uh, no, I don't have any questions. Thank you so much.
Okay, we will go on, um, eating, FY22 adjusted school day counts, Chris?
Yes. So, um, first of all, and Dr. Kizner, I don't think, he hasn't joined us yet because he's still working with staff. I actually left a meeting to, to jump into the FAB meeting. Um, so they were working hard trying to still iron out what it, what the proposed schedule is gonna look like for next year. But we do know that there are gonna be increased costs. This, uh, schedule here is, I'm gonna say very preliminary. It's very likely subject to change. Wanted to start getting the listing and providing it to you and to the full board. We can discuss it tomorrow as well during the superintendent's presentation. Uh, but one of our biggest costs is gonna be our transportation cost, which is one of the next items on the agenda as well. And currently projecting, um, kind of based on what Kizner presented last week as a, as a split model and only being able to allow it to have 50% or we're trying to implement social distancing on our buses and seeing a pretty drastic reduction in how many students are on the bus. We are gonna see an increase in the number of routes. And so roughly projecting a, a 25% increase in routes and so we have to increase our, our bus driver, not around what we pay, but the number of hours that we're paying them and there will be an impact on our fuel costs. So that's currently a little over $2 million and, and for all of these, like I mentioned, I, I might say two or three more times before I, turn it back over to the FAB, but very, very preliminary and still working on all the different scenarios and, and gathering information on where we're gonna see impacts.
Talking about areas, um, Chris, have you, sorry, have you been able to, um, get us any information in terms of, um, the bus line in Fredericksburg or the bus system that, uh, we discussed, um, that from the VSBA?
Yeah, so, so Barry has been looking into it and he has not found, um, any bus carriers, private carriers that, um, would have availability. Many, one of the biggest issues is, is many of these private carriers maybe I would provide drivers if we were lucky, but they don't have the buses and we don't have the buses either. So we have obviously some buses that are maintained in addition to our fleet. So when one breaks down, we rotate in another one, but we don't have enough where else than we can have another 30, 40, 50 buses that we can work into our fleet to, to increase the number of routes that we're running. And so Barry and his staff have been, have been reaching out. We even looked into, um, if we had the money, what was the quickest we could order new buses and have them here in time. And unfortunately, the, you know, those are anywhere from a three to four month, the four month being more likely the lead time on, on ordering new buses. So it puts us well into September, October timeframe before we could even have new buses if we could find the drivers to fill them.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Yep. So, um, I'm just trying to wrap my head a little bit around, um, so it looks like you're projecting a 25% increase in the number of routes. And I'm just trying to think mathematically kind of how you guys got there. So is it that you have half as many students each day? But you're going to have, uh, more, have to run more routes? Is that the, the thought?
Correct.
Okay, and, um, but I guess that's gonna very much depend upon how you, like, so, so we will, and, and you may not know this, but will students be geographically going to school together? So you're gonna try to, I mean, it sounds like a logistical nightmare, but yeah, I'm just trying to wrap my head around this. So you would be having, trying to pick up all the kids in a particular neighborhood- trying to pick up all the kids in a particular neighborhood and have them going to school on the same day?
Um, well, not necessarily. It may be by, um, let's say for example alphabet. So, um, A through N go two days a week and then, you know, N through Z, you're gonna go two days. Whatever that split ends up being. And, and part of that is looking at trying to keep siblings together.
Yeah, just, just be cautious cause some families are blended and so you will not have the same last name.
Yeah, we just, yeah, we have discussed that. So I know they're aware of that.
But I would think if it's neighborhoods that would take care of siblings, if they live in the same house.
Yeah, it would just be still looking at across grade levels. So, um, what might work for elementary might not work for middle or high or vice versa. So, um, there, I know there's a lot to consider, but I, I know we're definitely looking at that closely.
I think Liza had a question and then I will follow. Uh, my question is, um, if we pose a mask rule, can we put more kids on the bus and help alleviate some of these extra transportation costs?
Uh, so I don't, I don't know. I don't wanna get too far into what Dr. Kizner will be presenting tomorrow, but I know we're looking at different options for, for what's allowable and how many children we can get on a bus. Originally we thought the number may only be as, you know, if we alternate seats, it's, we're only getting about ten kids in a seat.
No, twenty-four, I think.
Yeah, so, so now looking at potentially wearing masks, which may be a school board decision.
Yep.
V D, I think it's V D H, um, will allow is, is saying that it's okay if you make, if you have students wear a mask, we could get the twenty to twenty-four students and you can have siblings ride together in the same seat. Um, so right now there's conflicting information, I think, from the state and maybe what some of local health departments is, but it's raining more likely that we can have in that twenty to twenty-four, um, students on, on a bus. And then that could, like, like I mentioned, could rain, um, could vary depending on whether there are siblings. But even siblings can still create an issue because if you put two or two, two kids in a seat, it starts to limit now where you can put the next kid because now you have a kid, a student on the inside of the seat and on the outside of the seat. And the student on the outside of the seat may be too close to the next seat over.
Yeah.
So there's still complaining there. So it's not gonna, not gonna be where we can have, you know, thirty kids in, on a bus. It's still probably in the twenty-four is maybe the, the cap that we're looking at.
Yeah, so I'm pushing for a mask and I think that would open up a lot of opportunities, but one of the concerns that I'm thinking of when I keep hearing siblings, I cringe a little bit because, um, the bus driver has a lot of, you know, work to do, you know, driving kids. And then if you have older kids, even though they're siblings of the younger kids, sometimes older kids misbehave worse than their, the little ones. And so what I don't want is to, you know, it has to be where, uh, if they're siblings, they're elementary siblings versus having a sibling that, you know, goes to middle school or whatever on an elementary bus where, um, you know, some parents may not approve of that. So I, I'm not sure when you say siblings, what that means, but that is neither here for our discussion, but I, I will have to caution that, um, I'm concerned about that piece. Okay, so if there's nothing else, um, do you wanna go on or do, are we done with this or are you still scrolling down my seat?
Um, well, I just point out that I, I put some potential additional funding sources there. With our FY twenty looking a little bit better than it was a week ago and definitely two weeks ago. If you recall, we have a million dollars in our FY twenty-one budget. It's a carryover from FY twenty and that was, you know, for our, our summer and expanded remediation throughout the school year. If we were able to exceed that one million dollars, that's a potential funding source to roll that into FY twenty-one. Wanted to draw attention that the superintendent did send a letter to the county a few weeks ago and approximately the middle of May requesting, um, some more of the F, or the, uh, County CARES Act funding that they are slated to receive. And so in that I believe has been on their agenda and is part of their potential funding. So may receive that one point two six from the county. And even with the carryover, even if our carryover was as high as a million, we're still gonna be short as our projected. But I wanted to point out to be that this is a full, these costs, uh, the left, left cost amount is our annual costs and tried to break it down into a monthly. We're still working on that for some of the supplies. So depending on how long we are in the modified learning environment, uh, with the limitations is gonna really drive how much our, our total costs are gonna go up for the entire year. But roughly monthly is probably gonna be between four hundred and four hundred and fifty thousand on the areas that we've already identified. But as I mentioned before, as we continue to work through this unprecedented, that there's probably gonna be a few more areas that we identify. So long story short, is right now don't have enough funding if, if this was gonna go continue on for the entire year.
Um, yeah, so Pam, can I ask something?
Yes, of course.
Sure. So, um, Chris, would you, I, I, I would just like to make a suggestion for something to bring to the next fab meeting, which would be, um, suggested areas of where there might be some savings in order to, to, um, come up with the funds for these additional costs. And am I correct that if we actually end up having an outbreak of COVID and have to shut schools down again, then there would be savings associated with that?
That's correct.
But how much savings in compared to the money that we have to spend for cleaning unless we take that cleaning money to, from COVID? And if we have an outbreak, even though there are savings, would we have to move the kids to a building and would we have to rent a building or?
No, I said, I said if the school just gets shut down.
Oh, I got you. Okay. Not, not just one school. Okay, got you.
Well, the problem is, is we can't anticipate that. I mean, we really have no way of predicting. I mean, that's been part of the problem with COVID all along is that we can't really plan that far in advance because everything changes on a daily basis, it seems.
Agreed.
But I, you know, I, so I think that it would be important for the fab to consider, um, where we may have to find some savings if, so what would our shortfall be about every month? Let's see, I, I guess you're saying that you're anticipating, uh, you know, almost one, one and three quarters million would be on the annual budget, correct? Chris?
Uh, well, from, so it's, it's four point seven on an annual, then we've really only identified um, a little bit less than, than two of that. So probably it's, um, closer to two and a half million dollars that we'd be short on an annual basis.
I guess I was looking at the wrong number. Sorry. So we're about two and a half million. If we go with the current plan. And, you know, the other alternative would be that we, you know, that COVID, we get a vaccine or we get something else and we can go back to a normal, relatively normal schedule. But, um, the odds of that happening, I think are pretty slim at this point.
So if you go down the vaccine route, we, we already know, even if we do get a vaccine this year, it is not gonna help us this year. It's definitely with kids because, uh, you know, parents with their vaccines and all that. So we're, we're looking at even next year, if, if anything. I agree.
And to clarify, if we, if we did have a significant shutdown next year, uh, you're correct that we would have expenditure savings, but would also have to factor in that we could see, uh, so there's a lot of hypotheticals here, obviously, but we could see reductions in our state revenue again. But if the economy is, is restricted and, and sales tax is in a, in a decline, we may not meet budget expenditures that way either. Um, we did hold back the three million dollars in FY twenty-one, which as we get better numbers on sales tax, if we don't have another such shutdown, that potentially could be recognized as a, as a source for this as well. But just, just pointing out that there still are some, some unknowns that if we did have a significant shutdown, it's not gonna only create savings. We'll have some revenue adjustments as well.
Okay, I, I have more questions, but I, I'll leave that for later at the end because it's, it's, it's just a COVID question I have. So we could continue on, um. Welcome Dr. Kizner for joining us.
Thank you. I was in the instructional meeting. Oh, yeah, thank you. I was in the instructional meeting.
All right. So can we look at the, the before and after school care? You could talk the transportation that we, I would.
Yeah, and, and, and I don't have a, a.
Yeah, we know.
Have anything to share for?
Thank you for joining. Um, if nobody has anything else on their transportation challenge, which we could, uh, move on to before and after school care? Yeah, let's, let's move on.
Um, so this is, um, put on here just for discussion. I don't have a formal document here.
My document?
To share, so I'll put it up to the.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Yeah. Sure.
Hey Pam, you, you.
Yeah, so we, we don't have anything under, so you don't have anything to share, um, either employees and all those potential locations? Cause this is a conversation that we had at the school board and we just wanted to put it here as a placeholder. I am? Sorry.
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
I can.
Can everybody hear me? You can? Okay.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, all right. Yeah, it's a placeholder. Okay, well, I, I, if it, if it happens again, um, but, um.
Wait, wait, do you, am I on, am I, I could quickly give you a, a little one.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
All right, so the YMCA has a capacity only to provide, this is not before and after, this is during the day for our staff. They do not have the staffing capacity nor, nor would we meet social distancing if we offered it to non-staff employees. Once we get a list, then we may find that not as many staff want to have that as an option. We'll take that as an option. So then we could revisit that. I did reach out to the county administrator and the, uh, new county administrator, asked if the park and rec department could run programs. Um, the park, they said they don't, they're not licensed for childcare. I said, that's not totally accurate. Um, they have more flexibility. Um, they could call it summer camp, winter camp. They could, they could call whatever they wanna call it. Um, I know many communities, um, that have their park and rec doing this. So, um, that's the only thing I could share with you at this point.
Uh, could I, could I ask a question?
Sure.
Yeah, so, um, I wasn't aware that we were looking at before and after school for anybody. I mean, that, that presents all kinds of additional problems, doesn't it? In terms of cleaning, I mean, if they're using our facilities for before and after care and transportation. Just, were we just talking about care during the day or staff or do I miss under?
Yeah, I'm totally talking during the day. But also maybe helping families if the park and rec wanted to offer, um, for the days in which kids are not in school, an option. But I am, I am not speaking before and after school.
So the reason why I called it before and after and, and probably why it's listed like that, if we were planning on reducing the hours of school for, um, for certain kids and, uh, if they go to school like nine to one or whatever and their parents are working, if they are done at one, that becomes after school. And so who is gonna pick up those kids and get them? I guess it will be bused, but I was trying to like, um, if they go home, there's nobody there. So that, that was one of the reasons I was looking at having them um, as if it was school time. So if we are in school nine to three, we hold them from nine to three. And if they're done at one, that will be after care. That's what I was thinking that after and before.
Got it. That, that makes sense. Got it.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone on that one? And then we, we could just leave it here as old business and if there's anything that comes up. Um, you know, Liza could take that. All right. Next.
This, this is, um, one that I think, I asked Chris to, to make sure you're aware of the action because, um, uh, I think you, I think you, you are aware, but I want you to at least have what the board supervisors' action uh, about the Chromebooks really meant. Um,
Okay, correct.
Doesn't mean they can't change it, but, um, I did have an opportunity to see some social media posts um, uh, from some of our board supervisors that were, um, yeah, I'm in close self-congratulatory, but I'll just say they were letting the public know that they purchased Chromebooks for us, but they left out that other part, um, that the school board might be in a position where they have to reimburse it. So as we're talking about, I don't know if Chris went over yet, some of the potential new needs, um, we, we may be in a situation where we're gonna have to, if we get what CARES Act money, we may have to pay them back.
So I have a question on that. If we do get care money, wouldn't we be using the care money for COVID care, which is what it's, uh, it is intended for? Because we have dire other needs that we did not fulfill. So we need to counter with that at some point.
Right. And Chris is gonna show you soon. If, if not, I get I apologize cause I came in late. We have already put together a preliminary and early list. And if you saw the, uh, Washington Post or the V S B A briefing, uh, last week, uh, Prince William County put a list together of forty-four million dollars of additional needs they have, um, based on their COVID nineteen response. So, um, uh, anyway, that's just a frame of reference. They're about three times the size of us. So we could, you know, if you want to make life easy, we could say somewhere between fourteen and fifteen million dollars would be our needs. Um, and I'm, and I'm simplifying it. I, I understand that. So you are right, uh, Monsieur, on that, um, the COVID funding. And we will get, what will, how much we'll get, which we have not been told. We haven't really even been told when we'll get it. It was suggested it would be by mid-July. Um, it's not gonna be a huge amount of money, but again, if you look at this resolution, it suggests that we would be in a position that we would have, whatever we receive up to the amount that they gave us for the Chromebooks, we would have to reimburse. Am I wrong, Chris, in that interpretation?
No, that's correct. So up to the one point one oh five that they provided us, um, if we receive additional CARES Act or another form of funding that serve the same purpose related to COVID that whether it's a reimburse or they would just reduce our normal operating transfer by that dollar amount, uh, is maybe a way that they would do that. Um, they look at the first one point one oh five that we receive as, um, basically honoring this initial request that we made to them so that they wouldn't have to provide it to us. So they're providing, advancing us the funds now. And if we were to be, if we were to receive additional funding, it would go back to the county.
Any comments? Anyone?
Dr. Kizner, I did go, I did go over that, that cost listing that you were referencing.
Okay, good. All right, thank you.
Dr. Chase, um, Dr. Warner?
I'm good. Yeah, there's not much to say about that.
Yeah, there's not much to say about that, really.
Uh, yeah, I would, yeah, and I'm gonna say the same thing when we get to the COVID social distancing cleanup costs, it was something that I added on there. Like, I can't see, even if we get the same amount, one million, to do COVID social distancing, um, cleanup money. I can't see myself taking that money and say, here for your Chromebooks. Because both are needed, how can, how can one be exclusive over the other if we don't get that?
Well, exactly, I mean, uh, uh, clearly we have additional costs associated with COVID-19 and the new schedule and the additional cleaning and trying to get the kids to one-on-one. It, it, it's a thing, and bust, yeah, I, I mean, all of it's an added, um, cost that, that we're gonna have to try to figure out and, you know, I feel like the board supervisors is handing us something with one hand and taking it with the other, it's kind of, you know, still leaving us behind and, and trying to come up with, uh, solutions for this.
Well, I mean, I think it's pretty clear from what Chris presented that we're already looking at being two and a half million dollars behind without getting any additional costs, so, um, you know, we just, you know, that may be something that the joint, um, working group needs to have a conversation with the folks across the street about, so.
I, I agree with you and then sir, Lee, I, I think I'm hearing Dr. Kizner that you're doing the same thing with Prince William, um, as Prince William did, which is to get that list together of what our cost is and this is one of the reasons why we're putting all these different costs here, we would like to see so that we could share that with the board of supervisors. But I will be reaching out to my counterpart on the board and to my other counterpart on the board, the two of them, to explain or to get an explanation of why they feel that they need that, uh, amount back, um, at this point, as if we don't have additional, um, costs, I, I will be having that conversation and I hope that, um, um, you all, um, do the same and then maybe, um, by the time we get to that joint meeting, um, hopefully, um, you know, it's, uh, the idea has softened, um, alright?
I, I, I want it to be mentioned, of course, a couple of board members, the last couple of meetings have suggested that the public needs to be more engaged in the advocacy for our budget. And I just think this is an area that most people were not aware of, um, that took place, so if we're asking the public to be advocates, um, there needs to be transparency, otherwise they don't know what they're advocating for.
I think we need to also make sure that the entire board, our board is fully aware that this money is not really, um, funny for the cause, not necessarily a bonus that we are going to be expected to pay back if we get additional CARES funding. So we've gotta be clear with everybody on that.
Perhaps when the report from this meeting is given at tomorrow night's meeting, all of that can be mentioned. Um, the fact that we're getting two and a half million short projected at the moment and we still haven't gotten through at all and then, um, that if we get additional CARES Act funds, we're supposed to return that million dollars, which, um, given that we're two and a half million short, that might be problematic.
Yeah. And I agree. Yeah, well, we have, uh, additional like dollar amounts for tomorrow, you think, Chris? Um, like approximate, so that we could, um, at least add that. I think you did mention some when I was still messing around with my computer. So if I could get that, all of that, I could put it into our, uh, conversation tomorrow. Um, okay, any, anything else under, um, the Chromebook purchase? Thank you very much, uh, for that insight, uh, Dr. Kizner. Um, so we're, we're at H right now, if nobody has anything else on that Chromebook, uh, the COVID social distancing cleanup, I we, if we don't have it, um, I just wanted to be a placeholder there, but do you anticipate, do you have anything right now that you see, when I say cleanup, um, Doctor Chase brought up a good point, um, that we should anticipate, um, we don't want it to happen, but we should anticipate that if a breakout, that we, uh, have to move, um, you know, students, that was, that was mine, but Doctor Chase had one where, um, when we're doing the social distancing in the classroom, we have to move furniture out, store the furniture, um, buy more trash cans, because there is gonna be a lot of, you know, uh, paper towels and wipes being used and so to keep, you know, the students clean. Um, has that been taken into consideration, I'm hoping, but is that cost attached to it already?
Yeah, so a lot of that is, is caught up in or listed in the cost that, that I showed previously.
Okay.
We, you know, you, you mentioned moving costs, that's an area that John and I have talked about significantly, that's not currently on that list. Although, depending on, um, depending on how it all shakes up, we probably will have some moving, we're not gonna be able to move all furniture out with our current maintenance staff out of, you know, thirty-two school sites. So we have, we have started looking at that and, and trying to come up with just ballpark figures, but currently think we can leave a lot of the furniture, someone's gonna, some of it is gonna have to get moved to the classroom in order to get the proper social distancing.
Well, well, also folks, there's really ducked in one CDC, I, I'm not sure, maybe I'm not understanding the question about moving furniture out. Cleaning furniture is, is not anything that I have read and I've read pretty much, pretty much probably everything that I can think of where we actually have to replace the furniture, um, so. Yeah, um.
More, more cost right there then?
Well, I, I think we've, we did have money in and you guys approved for the budget, additional costs and then for cleaning and then Chris, um, had, what I think you guys saw earlier was more money for cleanup costs. But I guess I'm, the part I'm just reacting to is, um, replacing furniture, um, or, or
Did somebody, did, did somebody say we were gonna replace furniture? I don't remember hearing that, what I heard was storing furniture if it isn't gonna be in the classroom in order to, like in elementary schools, if you have flexible seating all over the classroom, you may have a hard time keeping kids socially distanced because they may choose to use furniture that's there, so that might be a problem. Um, and then I think the other thought was just, is there going to be any additional classroom needs, like trash cans or something like that?
Okay, cause it's listed as social distancing cleanup course, so maybe I'm misunderstanding here, um, uh.
Yeah, we're gonna try to, this is John Anderson, and we are gonna try to minimize how much has to go into offsite storage, we're gonna try to have any
John, you can't be hurt on, yeah, I don't think your mic's working too well.
Oh, God, okay. We're, we're trying to, uh, minimize how much we store offsite, we're trying to create storage in the school, so hopefully there will not be a lot moving costs, we're just getting started to work with the principals now on that.
I, I guess one of the questions about that was whether the classrooms, the way they were set up, were going to be able to utilize the furniture that was already in place in order to maintain social distancing, or if we would have to make purchases. That was one of the discussions, but hopefully we, we don't have to purchase anything.
Yeah, we tested some classrooms and we're trying to pair the desks, so especially for elementary schools, we'll have a A and a B desk side by side and, um, that's gonna help minimize the storage as well, so we're, we're, we are gonna need to move the big uh, kidney-shaped tables out, the group tables that they like so much, um, and we're thinking those can go in the gym or some other area, but those
If, if, if those in the gym, we need the gym because we need all areas to be able to use, so you're, you're meaning you're putting them in the gym for usage?
Or, yes, or storage, so those are, those are just tables that don't really work well with COVID-19, so those are an issue in the classrooms, but we, in the test cases, we did not have a lot of furniture that was having to be removed and, and completely from the classroom, so we think we can get any storage in the school, we just, uh, we're kind of in the early stages of that phase.
Uh, you have to think that through a little bit, uh, those round tables are pretty large and if you, you don't have that, that much of a storage and if you're planning on using the gym for classes, um, then
We're not, yeah, I, I, this is in John's behalf, him and his team working with principals, they've been on this for the last few weeks.
Gotcha.
If, if we need, if we need to store things for a course, we'll let the board know if it's a significant cost, um.
Okay. And then the only other thing, and like I said, this is written here just to cover everything, the only other thing I was thinking about, and these are just things you may have thought about it already, we're not criticizing, we're just bringing things up, um, because we just wanna make sure that it's thought about, you know, that no aha moments. But, uh, the other thing I was thinking about, I mentioned, uh, churches and I've mentioned, um, other buildings and say, for example, uh, the Geico building, um, I'm not sure if, you know, if you need a, a fallback, a building for whatever reason, if we have an outbreak at one particular place, you know, what, what the plans are, so, um, just thinking about those associated costs, that's, that's you know, just thinking through everything, um, so we, we're just here to help.
Is that H or I?
Say that again?
I think we're starting, I, I think we're
Okay.
I guess the concern, excuse me, the concern was. Sorry, um, if we have to close a particular school or classroom or a, one facility, but keep the others open, I guess we're wondering how is that gonna impact, um, any budget concerns?
Well, this is just my initial reaction, is it'd be more of an instructional disruption, I'm just trying to think out loud.
Mm-hmm.
A, a budget disruption, um, now, I, I know going to Ms. Young's comment, if we had to, and, and I think the building she's mentioning is a good example, if we had to go to the Mary Washington Stafford campus, let's just say, um, uh, let's just use Mountain View, if Mountain View had to be closed for a few days, um, do we want to work with them on a, on a, on a, you know, on a daily rental rate? You know, I could see some logistic challenges because we would have to make sure the social distancing and everything is set up there, but, um, you know, uh, a long-term closure is probably, would require some, um, creative alternatives. Um, we are designed to have the machinery and the manpower to get in to do, um, intensive triage when we have to, when a building, um, has, um, uh, and tha, and that's the other thing, i- i- you know, a- as we're learning more, if somebody's tested positive for COVID-19, that doesn't mean you have to shut your building down, clean it up, I know you know this, but, but sometimes people think, you know, you have to do that, y- you don't, you don't have to do that, um, uh, a- and then, um, so I, I guess, I, I can't tell you we have a cost associated with it, um, I don't really see it would be more fear of the public than, um, than a, 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 a health necessity to close a building down, um. Uh, and, and so I think that's really gonna be more the challenge, if you have somebody tested, there's gonna be immediate reaction to, um, for some, is that, so.
This, this goes with Doctor Chase's, uh, comment at the last school board meeting where, um, elementary, we could see that, that we wo- wouldn't have to do that, we will only have to clo- uh, you know, clean one classroom. But if we're talking high school, where unless they're not changing classrooms and the teachers are changing versus the students, but if you're planning on having, you know, people walk the hallways to get to their other classes, then that is gonna be a challenge and if it, if there is an outbreak, you will have to close the school down and, and move those kids somewhere, um.
I think we're still waiting to get, to hear the plan, I mean, I, I, I think I've thrown out a lot of questions and I'm hoping for more information tomorrow, but, yeah, I, I get the sense that, that it's still, the high school seems very much like it's still been a work in progress.
Yeah, a- and we're also trying to follow as much as possible the VDH and the CDC guidelines, um, there, there's no question that we run into this issue when it comes to flu. You know, that there are times that school systems, and maybe Stafford, not since I've been here, but I know last year, two years ago, when we had, I've got what school it was, one or two of our schools had a high flu, um, illness. People were wondering if we would shut down the school because they want to minimize the spread. It wasn't so much the school was the issue, it wasn't like we were all sudden cleaning that school, we were just trying to isolate, keep the kids home, it was social distance at home, so I, I guess in my mind, I'm trying to, if you had issues with COVID-19 at a building, do we then move everybody? It's not the building that caused the COVID-19, it's the people in that building, so then do we move them to another building and, and and think that's going to do anything different to protect, um, children, I don't know, we wanna isolate those that we know are tested positive as much as possible, we work with the health department to tracing, so we could get those people isolated, but I'm not maybe understanding yet the weak trauma of COVID.
Maybe I misunderstood, then, then that's my fault, because maybe I misunderstood about what Korea does or what New York does, where you're cleaning the, the train stations every night or when an outbreak occurs, you're not only isolating and tracing, but the location where it happened, we, and if it's a big outbreak, you have to clean the whole building, and that's what I'm saying. When would you, would you do that overnight?
We, we have a cleaning schedule every day, in our plan that we presented, we had a Wednesday and Saturday deep cleaning. So, uh, the buses after every route, um, cleaning, so there's no question there's gonna be increased cleaning. I guess I'm just reacting a little bit to the, to the rationale in my mind, I'm thinking this out, just as we're having this conversation, is COVID-19 is basically spread airborne and, and if, if, if we're taking those same population and then just moving it to another building, well, I'm not sure how that realizes the airborne, no one
It's airborne, but it's also still touching, even though they're saying it's not
We have, we have, no, I understand that, we, I, I think I've been pretty clear and the planning even last week, we're, we're doing cleaning every day. That's, and, and the plan that I talked very briefly, which is going to, Doctor Chase is right, it's going to look a lot different tomorrow. Um, I could tell you though, that middle and high school, there would be movement of children, it'll be different pattern, um, but there'll be movement, um, but saying that, uh, I don't want, uh, you to, to, to not think that cleaning is not very much part of our strategy for, um, mitigating the health risk.
And I don't want you to misunderstand that I understand that there is daily cleaning and then you also have deep cleaning, because you did mention that. I was only talking about in, in case there was, uh, a big outbreak of where, you know, um, a large group of kids were infected and we don't know yet who they are or where they are. I don't know, I guess the deep cleaning would, 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 would handle that, um, but you will have to shut down for that day and then on, once it's clean, I guess you reopen, so that answers my question, um, so that's good. Thank you for that explanation and the next one.
I made up that explanation as I went through the
I'm sure But if nobody has anything else, my favorite one is extending the school year round, because you know, I'm a proponent of all year round school. So, um, we put it on the schedule to see if what comments or, um, ideas you may have with this concern, because it could be an option, um, to add days to the calendar, so. Any ideas?
Well, I have to agree that, you know, it's, we need to be flexible about the length of school year, I especially with parents trying to get back to work and life trying to get back to normal, it just I, I'm just not sure that they can deal with, um, long breaks like summer, I more of an advocate for this full school year school to, year round.
I I I think it's a a a great idea, but given all the emails I've been getting about the staff code of conduct, I can't even imagine what it's gonna look like um to do the other. Um, and I think monetarily, we just don't have the money. But it would certainly, I'm I'm not opposed to um at some point, get an an idea of of, is it possible? Is it something we can think about?
Yeah, and and I think you understand that the school year models that are out there, there are some exceptions, where I'm about to say, uh, do not increase the number of days that kids have. It just changes the pattern. It's usually something to the effect of six weeks on, two weeks off, or nine weeks on, three weeks off. So it's um, Hopewell would be now a narrow school system, but their school board just decided to delay the implementation of their year around school um based on too many uncertainties. So um, you know, extending the school year um is something that if money was not variable, I I is very attractive to me, especially offering a Saturday option. Um, then we look at the budget and we begin to see the transportation staff costs, food costs and so on. It's still an attractive educational option to me. I just don't know how, right now, how I could make that recommendation knowing the financial limitations we're under.
Certainly. Um, a- a- around this, um, Dr. Kizner, um, do we know uh where? And and this is a broad question and you you may not have the answer, but I I'm just gonna throw it out anyway. Do we know where the kids, um, where they are landing right now? Especially the underserved or the that were already having difficulties and on the edge of not getting to the next grade? Have we kind of, um, and and it's not my name, don't don't scream at me, no caps, um.
I I don't understand captain, okay, go ahead. But I I actually love your question and it kind of give you a preview of the thinking of tomorrow. So, and I said this to my email to you guys, and I know sometimes when I write these emails, I think they're thinking, God, there he goes again, or is he talking to me? But I'm talking to all seven of you. And um, so we want to, I I want to be pragmatic, not overpromised, but very focused on the kids that need it the most. And the plan that we are gonna, we're gonna show you an A and B plan. The A plan is a two days on, two days off, l- longer than the three hours. I forget what it is, maybe five and a half hour days, um, maybe even six hour days. But anyway, much longer than what I told you last week. Um, and that fifth day, and 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 a lot of our staff feel strongly about it. We need to target children that in a regular classroom don't get the individualization they need. And that fifth day would be for that kid group of children that are struggle all the time, but we now know from March to when it, to August seventeenth, they're most likely further behind. So that's one model that we're gonna present. The other model, which I I see the advantage, and we're gonna actually show you the advantages. I don't think we use it advantages, disadvantages, as we try to uh use better terms. But the other one is a two day on for one group of children. Uh, and going to Dr. Chase's question, so your questions do help us reassess our plans. So Monday, Monday is the day of the week where we have more state or federal holidays. We're just having to be off on Monday. So last week, when I told you Monday, Tuesday, then Thursday and Friday, don't think that anymore. It'll be, it'll be, in Plan A that I just shared with you, if we went with the two days on, two days off, it would be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And Monday would be the day for more targeted support, preparing, planning more for remote learning, um, PLCs and so on. And the deep, and the, I'm I'm pointing to you, Pam, just in case you can't see. And the deep, and the deep uh cleaning.
That's a nice, that's a nice one, that's a nice one to have, that day where the teachers are actually having their planning. Um, yeah.
And so Plan B is three days on, Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday for a group of children, Thursday and Friday for a group of children, but the following week, that Thursday and Friday kids come on Wednesday. So in a ten day period, um, everybody pretty much gets like five days of school. Okay, now, the advantage to that is there's no question, you're in school more time, because the first one I mentioned, everybody's in four days out of ten days. This one, you're in five days out of ten days. Except the targeted children, the equity issue question. So this is the, this is, you know, this is, and I don't think there's a right or wrong maybe as much as where, what, what are we gonna prioritize? So, so, you know, the second plan, we are still building interior support and remediation. So it's not in my world, nor our instructional leaders' world, and either or. I don't want you to get that impression that if we want the three day, two day schedule, that those kids are not gonna get some levels of of tiered support, they will. That's totally built in to our schedule. Um, but then there's that remote learning part. Because I hope you understand, I know you would appreciate this, but I wanna, I'm gonna say it tomorrow, but I wanna say it now. Um, if you have fourteen kids in your class, or you have twenty-eight kids in your class, you are still teaching the same way, you are still teaching hard. You're not gonna say, because I have half the kids, I teach half the energy. So these, matter of fact, you may be even teaching harder because you're, now have to do things twice, okay? And 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 the, the beauty of children is that every kid is different. So the question that I'm struggling with, and we're kind of struggling with as a bit, is, and this is why, and I'm gonna show it to you, uh, I'll send it to you right after this uh, this uh meeting. I just got the Northern Virginia, so Prince William Fairfax Louden, all those places are on to Alexandria Falls Church. They're trying to do their planning together, although there's some differences among them. And then if you read the VSBA thing today, you saw how the Louden parents are, you know, in an uproar. So, you know, you you're never gonna win this this thing. But they're doing the two day on, two day off, and one day, as I described to you, in our A B schedule. But they also are planning for more of a of of a remote learning experience. Um, because they're giving those, the teachers, that fifth day to do that planning and monitoring. And so as we increase the face-to-face, it's not like we're gonna have a cog, we're not gonna have that many teachers that are gonna be out due to health risk or not at the building due to health risk. We'll have a few, but not that many. So it's, I'm not seeking any answers, I'm just sharing with you some of the 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 challenges. As we increase on one side the face-to-face, we might limit, and 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 based on the feedback that you guys are hearing, the feedback I'm hearing, the feedback from the parent surveys, maybe that's not a bad sacrifice. Maybe more face-to-face, um, especially for the elementary children, is um more valuable than worrying about the remote. I think the big difference though, even with the remote learning in any of our models, different than what we experienced in the spring, the teachers are gonna see the kids at least two days a week. You know, there was no mon- there was no conversation with your teacher. So the teacher that's gonna be doing the remote planning will have you at least two days a week. And then if you, if Schedule B is the one that's approved, um, then it'll be at least uh five out of ten days. So anyway, um, so I do, I do hear you loud and clear about those kids that are are the ones you just described, um, that we make sure. So that would be like maybe my Saturday group or my late, like my three to five o'clock group. Um, uh, you know, but again, um, everything comes with a, with a, with a, with a cost.
Everything comes with a cost. I know for the ones that, um, you know, I'm concerned of about all the kids, but in order for there to be some kind of um balance for the students. And this is the reason why I was thinking about that aftercare, um, especially because um, you know, the days are so so much shorter. And the other question I had, and this is my only last question in terms of, how do we fit? And I I know this is what you all worked on all these weeks, but how did you actually fit and decided that it was two days versus four, that you're able, you know, excluding music and arts and all that? I'm sure that's what it is. Are we saying that excluding arts and music and all that, that these two days replaces the five days outside of arts and music? Is that how you came up with that?
No, first of all, everybody's getting art and music. Those those are very important subjects, okay? Um, and you know, I read a great thing on Twitter and I and I, maybe I should, if I could find a cut in pace. Um, a lot of kids learned a lot of things during uh COVID-19 closure that, um, and this was actually written by a parent, said, my kid learned to garden, my kid learned to cook, uh, my kid uh learned this and learned that, please don't say my kid didn't learn anything. Um, so, um, so for a lot of the kids, art and music and 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 PE and other activities are important part of their educational experience, part of their socialization, part of their social emotional needs. Why we can't have kids for four days a week is strictly the conversation you were having with John Anderson, social distancing. Okay, we're actually extending a little bit of the interpretation of the definition by going fifty percent of our class size. Um, if we went strictly to six feet, which you don't have to, so six feet or when when possible, something like that. Now, we're, we're not going three feet, we're not going four feet, but there will be times we may be going five feet, six inches, which will be fine at our health plan. We're basically saying, well, if you're a twenty-six size class, we'll have thirteen kids, just to simplify the math. So absolutely, if, and and that's the other thing we have to remind the public, and I'll say it again a couple of times tomorrow, why we're even having this conversations because of this thing called COVID-19? And you're getting the emails that I'm getting, and I'm probably getting some that you're not getting, and you're probably getting some I'm not getting. Um, there are some people that actually believe there is not an issue. And there are some people believe we should not send their kids open school until a vaccine is is um is discovered. So I I just, not that I'm trying to split the baby, I think we have a plan in place that recognizes the importance of the whole child. There's a social emotional part to it, there's a socialization, there's an academic part, there's a meals part, there's a meals part when you're not in school, obviously, there's a technology part. Um, but I also think there's a little bit of me, and I and I would say something like the before and after school. And last week, the school board wondering if we should broker childcare. There are some things the school's gonna let go of. I mean, we we gotta go back to our core mission. I I don't think it's in our best interest, definitely not in my time or my staff's time, to try to get people connected to find childcare. I think the school board, and and that's something we're gonna discuss tomorrow, like you know, I I don't know, the board planning that they think they have to vote on it, or this, they're gonna trust the superintendent being the educational leader, working with all these educators and fully immersed in all the research, that we're going to say, we're gonna support what decision you're making? Or are we gonna, this is gonna be a critical decision? Um, so I bring that up is because I don't want us to get into a position where we're gonna spend a lot of time talking about things that are important. Don't get me wrong, no one loves kids more than this, me and you, and I don't want you to, but, and and you, Dr. Warner, and you, and anybody on here. But I'm not sure I wanna get into the childcare broken business. If we give parents enough notice, then they have to make the arrangements. And I feel for parents, I feel for families, but we have our limitations. And if we get off our mission, then we're gonna use a lot of our energy and time on areas that I think the compact with the family is, we're gonna give your kids as strong of an education possible under the guidelines we have to follow. And you as a parent have to do the other.
So, Dr. Kizner, with all of that said, and before we adjourn, if nobody else has anything, I will tell you that I will disagree with you on that topic, simply because we're feeding them. We care about these kids, we may be their only lunch, so we're feeding them. But now you're saying that we're gonna feed you when you come to school, and guess what? If you have to go home early because, guess what, you know, we're only doing two days and you have to get home at three o'clock, um, that we will just drop you out of the bus at your house at three o'clock and, you know, you, you, whatever the case might be, or at one o'clock, if our school ends at one. So those are two extra hours that we're saying, okay, we're gonna drop a child off. And we're the ones that, I mean, COVID happens, but I'm saying that we're the ones that are setting this up. And you're right, we 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 give them their time and say this is it, but I care a little bit more about that. And so I'm thinking that, um, you know, as a school system, we 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 should look at that too and make sure that, um, you know, we we cover as much bases as we can. If we can't, we cannot, but at least we've tried.
Well, I I I hear you. Uh, I I experienced last board meeting, a political decision, not what was in best interest of children. So I'm hoping that, um, we we value, I don't think anybody differ in our value. I just have an obligation to manage our resource and the energy of our people, okay? And even on Father's Day yesterday, even on Father's Day yesterday, my instructional team met and deliberated and planned. So it's when when, i- if if our four-hour meeting on Tuesday on Saturday was good, but my folks are doing that every day, on the weekends and the evenings. I have another meeting with them this evening, a group of them. So, you know, we can't be everything to everyone as much as I would like to. And you know what? As I insulted the board supervisors about our budget, I haven't heard any board member yet publicly say what I said. And we think that we can do all this at an hour budget, then, you know, we are just overpromising and we're gonna underdeliver. Um, so I I, you know, I just feel strongly about it that I want to not burn out my staff and focus on what we, what we primarily have to focus, um.
And I'm not saying that the staff has to do everything, because this is where we need community. You know, this is something that Dr. Chase had mentioned and and Dr. Warner and, you know, Susan and all of us were saying.
The problem with that, what involved, it's.
Uh, okay, I I know I have a five thirty I gotta go to, but when the, when the, well, it's with um Dr. Chase and um and Ms. Hill and uh Ms. Hazard. But once the school board says, I don't want staff to have to focus on it, well, you guys aren't gonna do it. I mean, that's, I mean, I mean, it's it's so easy, I I serve on different boards. It's so easy for board members to say, this is what we should do, and then we go back, I'll see you next board meeting. So I I'm just respectfully suggesting, I need, I have an obligation to protect the focus and protect the time and energy of my staff. I feel strongly about it, because I know what, people were supposed to be on vacation today and tomorrow, and they chose not to, and that bothers me, because they haven't been on vacation and been working seven days a week, many hours, to get something that um is, oh, I think more than 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 good for our staff. So I I say that because I I'm not at a pose at all to after-school programming or before-school programming. And I do want people to be in safe places, but I know what um what we need to focus on, um, and and not lose sight of that. But bring it up tomorrow, it was a good healthy conversation.
All right, sorry, no time. Okay, anybody else, and before we adjourn? Go once. Thank you very much, everyone. And this is our last uh meeting for this year in terms of um Dr. Chase and I. Um, I've enjoyed um being on the FAB for these past, uh, is it two and a half years? And so I thank you all for, um, you know, um, allowing me to uh be chair and uh vice chair. And uh, Chris, you've been awesome, and Dr. Kizner, um, you've been awesome. So we just love, um, this little group that I've loved, um, this FAB for these past years.
Do we lose all three of you, who who's staying on, anybody staying on?
Um, uh, Dr. Dr. Warner.
Okay, good.
Yeah, uh, Dr. Chase and I, we've exhausted our time.
I wouldn't get so harsh. Oh, I wouldn't get so harsh if I lose your last meeting. Sorry. Okay, I gotta go. I gotta go for my evaluation. Oh, boy.
Oh, yeah. More more reason for you to be harsh, because that's, you're you're.
Let's let's see if we learned anything from last Saturday's, just.